Keep the brain out of the...
I had to give you one second.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, you're very nice. Yes, we have the presentation today. You're a great player.
Working on my back. Working on my back. I'm reading the play. I'll let that. Did I know? Which was size and everything. Put it down. You hung it in through the recorder? And I've got a copy.
Just like you know what plumbing.
Yeah.
I'm also being announced. I'm like, oh boy, you can't, I left that. It's like shit like that.
No. I said, I can't watch anything. We do have a church place still working. Quick up with the next one. He's interested in.
We don't work on it for four hours. They do it again.
Uh huh. Yeah, they have the stuff up.
Yeah.
Put it in this thing. I bought it.
Speaking of that.
That's like plans. I got one.
So you've got the letter, right?
I've got the letter. Just waiting. What's that one? What's that one? You just said, you said, you gave me, I made them ready. I gave me, you just spent everything.
They had another one at MCC.
From the backyard. Yeah.
And what we do, you know, maybe it's eleven.
So I did. The side yard.
I'm running it in there now. It's fine.
I did. I wasn't sure what the side was.
Oh.
And it's the side. Yeah, so. But because of the height.
We've got a floor, it's supposed to be. Architecture. We've got a floor, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, no, it looks like it's weight or something. Just let them know you're missing a couple of people.
Okay, I'm going to call the planning board meeting to order for Thursday, December 6th. I just want you guys to be aware, there are three members present, so there is a quorum. We're hoping our fourth member will arrive. As far as we knew, all four of us, we're gonna be here. So the risk to you is that the decision tonight is unanimous in your favor, or we can postpone until next month. So it's entirely up to you. You wanna go forward? Okay, very good. All right. All right, so the first order of business, if the board would review meeting minutes from, oh my goodness, September 2018. It's been a while since we've all been together, so.
Go on with it. It's already in.
Yep, I reviewed it. You guys have done it.
I didn't publish this as a public.
Okay. Um, so, yes, we need a motion to accept.
I make a motion to screw the minutes of the 18th meeting.
But you know who? Just second add motion.
I'm sorry.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes by Kathy, Peter seconds, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right. Okay, we have one item on the agenda before it's this evening. We have Mr. Walt Baker, Representative F.C. Martin, LFC, to present a proposal for subdivision of an existing property on Commercial and Martin Streets. So, Mr. Baker, oh, just.
Steve on that.
For Jack, for Jack.
As the chairman stated, I'm Walt Baker with TSB Engineering. With me tonight is Mr. Louis Fico, the partner, owner of the property that the application is here for tonight, the 405 Orchard Street. And what we called the Two Martin Street. And the map I posted on the board illustrates the property. I'm sure everybody's familiar with the site. It's, the buildings are all existing on the property. What he wishes to do is create a two lot subdivision out of the 2.6 acre parcel, because he has someone interested in buying the building on Orchard Street. So in order to do that, obviously, they want their own piece of land. So we looked at where we could place a rear property line, because obviously, the existing property lines are around the entire property. And in order to subdivide this and create a lot, what we did was we looked at the building, the height of the building, as you all know, it's supposed to be the one-to-one distance for the height, or even the variance, pre-existing building. So if we create a new property line on this side and this side, we needed to make this property line in excess of 36 feet, the height of the building. So we got it actually set at 55 feet. And 55 feet was more important to meet the parking requirements for the general industrial. So we actually need 40 parking spaces this evening. And we're showing 44. We, as you recall, this property used to be used for, how many different things, David?
Oh, Taylor Reynolds, Anne's Auction House.
Yeah, right.
I remember Taylor Reynolds. I'm going back.
Taylor Reynolds.
I first got the Webster's.
That's true, myself as well. That's right. Yeah, I've been there. So what we're showing is parking in the front, of course, and along the side, and to the rear. Like I said, establishing a rear property line and side property line with the other additional spaces here. Making sure we have the nine-by-18 parking stall and the adequate drive aisle for the parallel parking on the side, diagonal parking. And in order to have the depth we need for somebody to pull into a garage door and use the building. We do also wanna have an access easement. Louis wants to have it, so anybody that's renting anything in the rear property, on lot number two, as we call it, which would be 1.8 acres, and this will be 0.75 acres, would have access, legal access, to get to the other side of the property. And the same thing for the people on lot one, if they came in off of Orchard or Commercial, they could access it from the rear of the property. So you're not proposing to put up any fences or anything like that in the back. So it'll be open, it'll be striped, new parking spaces. And as far as the lot coverage, we can't have more than 50% lot coverage. And this being 0.75 acres, our actual existing building with the footprint is about 0.2 acres. So we're about 26% coverage and we're allowed 50%. So we meet the lot coverage, we meet parking requirements. We are, in speaking with Will, we've already applied to the zoning board, because the front setback is supposed to be 40 feet. But that's again for new buildings. This building's been here since 19... I said, I said prior to 1950. So we do line up with the adjacent property next door, the house to the side, is also at 20 feet off the property line. And the new commercial here is actually 40 feet, so you see the 40-foot depth and we're 20. But again, we're moving the ZBA for front setback variance and also the height variance due to the fact the side of the property meets the side setback requirement at 10 feet. We have 40 feet on this side, but based on the code, it should be 36 feet instead of 10 feet from the property line. So again, we're pre-existing non-conforming, so I assume we'll be okay, we'll go to the ZBA in two weeks. So basically, that's it. We'd like to subdivide it into two lots and get your approval.
Now, as far as the access easement through lot one into lot two, why not just apply for a curb cut or access to Martin Street for lot two? Or have something for the future? Because I need it with...
For the remaining lands?
What's that?
For the remaining lands in lot number two? Yeah, this is all actually called, you can see where the existing broken pavement is. There used to be other buildings on the property from years ago. Yeah, we've got plenty of access to get in, but Louis was thinking it'd be nice if somebody were coming down Orchard Street, that they would be able to cross over this property to access it from this side instead of having to go on a route. So it's just a courtesy for future tenants.
So I mean, you said the property, you have a potential buyer for the property?
Yeah, it's like a serve pro.
Okay.
It's like a serve pro. It's, you know, the cleaning companies, they come in and do steam, carpet steam cleaning.
Oh, serve pro, they're like the cleaning, restoration, fire disaster.
Exactly.
The company is called a cleaner image.
It's called cleaner image.
They do mold remediation, they do that type of thing.
So they have their office there plus storage for their equipment and...
Everything contained within the building?
Yeah, we've got plenty of garage access doors and obviously, the front would be set up perfectly for the office space.
And all their vehicles are gonna be parked inside.
So with that type of use, even though it's required to have one space for 500 square foot building, and it's a two-and-a-half story building, we've got 44 spaces, they're gonna have plenty of room. But again, we wanted to make sure it met the code.
No.
I mean, we're creating the property line, so we didn't wanna create anything that was in violation of the code. He was thinking we'd make the property smaller, so I think, no, we gotta make it bigger.
You can if you want, we did. As far as width of the access easement, will any potential problem with the width? I mean, if there's a car, cars parked diagonally, how wide would the access easement be? Probably a single lane, lane and a half?
Showing out like 40 feet. Well, it's 40 feet, but then the diagonal parking, so we're left with, because of the angle, it's like a 60-degree angle, we end up with 24 feet. So there's plenty of room for access. 24 feet is road width.
So it's about 24 feet?
Correct, it is 24 feet here. Correct. That's why I placed the parking on an angle, because you've got different configurations. We couldn't do perpendicular, obviously, 40 feet wouldn't make it.
I mean, I'm not so much concerned with, you know, vehicular craft as far as cars went in, but fire truck.
20 feet is what's required for a fire.
Okay.
Correct.
We're in, we're in, we're in the ball. I don't, I don't have any other questions or concerns. But no concerns at all. Okay. No concerns. All right. No comments from the board. I mean, this is the point of the meeting, this is open for public commentary, if anyone has any comments. If you do, or...
There's a problem. I don't, I don't believe that a legal, that there was published a notice for a public hearing for this particular application. Because they didn't make it to the paper on time. But they have to clean, clean up both lots with zoning anyways. So you couldn't grant both preliminary and final approval without a public hearing? We have to come back, just so you know, we have to come back next month. So here, we could look at it as a sketch plan. And they can make a decision on a sketch plan. But for final approval, you'd have to come back next month.
After the 14th?
Yeah.
Which would be January...
Whatever, the first.
Third.
There you go.
January 3rd?
Yeah.
Third?
The third. Right, first, Thursday, first Wednesday.
Thursday.
First Thursday.
Yeah.
Don't have a choice, right?
Yeah.
All right, so I mean, at this point, I mean, the board's obviously heard the plan. There is, I don't think anybody's disagreement with it, but until we can actually make a public comment on the proposal. It really not what you're gonna do as far as motions in either direction before we're gonna disapprove at this point.
Well, we go to the zoning board, so we'll hopefully have the variances from the zoning board.
Well, the zoning board would probably not give you any approvals until they get a recommendation from the planning board.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, you know, us to them, so it's, unfortunately, it sounds like this is a tough problem. So at this point, it's...
So the ZBA wouldn't do a conditional or...
No, they wouldn't. In all likelihood, they'd refer to the planning, waiting for the planning board's recommendation. That's generally how it works. We give them a positive or negative recommendation for, and then they can take it from there, as to, do they agree with those who not, or further discussion, or adjustments.
So then we have to go to the ZBA after the planning board's approval.
So come to us next month.
Right.
And then motion in either direction, and then the ZBA.
Oh, no.
Right?
No, no.
Wouldn't the ZBA need our positive or negative recommendation before they...
No.
No?
No, you don't need to make recommendations on variances. That's the ZBA's job.
Yeah, the responsibility of this board is to approve a subdivision. The variances of zoning.
Oh, right, okay. So, yes, obviously, the zoning boards, they take care of their issue.
So we can get the zoning board hopefully in two weeks?
Yeah. But like, remember, I talked to you on the phone, one of the things we gotta clean up is that one right-of-way line that's in the middle of the building. It'd be good to clean that up now, so put together something for that.
Because you're creating two lots.
Right.
So you gotta also look at lot number two and look at, you know, there's buildings that sit right on property lines. There's one building that sits, got a piece of it that's in on the right-of-way actually. So some of these things should be, you know, ideally, I think what the village would like is, is to, is, you know, to move... Move the right-of-way line so that the buildings not in it.
Yeah, there's a...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Yeah, well, I don't know what you'd do if you'd ever go to sell any of those buildings and you got one that's sitting right in the right-of-way. It's, it's kind of a mess. You know, that two-story stucco building, I don't know what the address is, but...
That's 102.
That one doesn't meet any of the setbacks for anything.
Right. I don't know, it was built in 1923.
But I understand it. And as it sits today, they're all pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
But now you're changing things by doing the subdivision. So I'm not sure what that does to the pre-existing non-conforming structures.
So would the village, I mean...
But, so the village would be, if, but we need a, the village would be willing to convey to Mr. Fico, or whatever entity actually owns the property.
F.C. Martin? F.G. Martin?
But we'd need, you know, some kind of a meets and bounds description of that little...
Right.
Piece, and you'd have, you'd have to come to some...
Triangular.
Agreement. Because I, is that the telephone pole?
Yep.
Because the telephone pole is there, we, the village would like to keep within the public right-of-way.
Would you create a diagonal line?
So, so it would have to, so it would have to, yeah, it would have to go out, you know, sort of parallel to the, you know, across that broken asphalt, parallel to the lot line to the west, and then, then go back to the west. You know, so it'd be a little, a little rectangular piece there that would include the, that deck and the little, that part of the building there.
I mean, what actually happened? Did they change his street configuration of it or something?
You know, I...
Because I have a map here from 65.
Yeah.
And it's, and I don't know, I'm starting to think that this year was the road. Right? Is that showing? Like this here, see, it's a... See right here?
No, it's good, that's the one.
Yeah.
Still is.
Yeah, the road is one thing, but the right-of-way is another. For the public right-of-way, you can't have a building in the public right-of-way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they ever at one point widened it, because I also have a, from, a map from like 1923 or 26.
Jake was doing some research on that. And he actually went downtown to do the research. And it was within the town at one time, then conveyed to the village. But what happens is when the road goes in, you have to create a right-of-way. And the right-of-way is usually always whatever the width is, so you've got like a 24-foot road, and then you've got a 55-foot right-of-way, and the right-of-way follows the road all the way. So my guess is, when the road was conveyed to the village, so they added a right-of-way, and then when the right-of-way was there, I don't know, what way here was that building built, that chalet?
That was built, well, like in 1920-something.
Oh, it was.
All them buildings, uh, as far as back as 1923, I know, okay? Or 26, something like that. That's when, every single building that's there...
Yeah.
Are still there, except for, there's one big building that's not there anymore.
Right.
But the whole concrete pad is there, because that burned down, I guess, many, many, many years ago. And that's where Crown Electric was at one point.
Right.
Okay? And then it burned. But I also asked my lawyer when I closed on this...
Yeah.
How they got title insurance, after you brought that up to me.
Yeah.
And they said, well, it's been like that forever, they says, it's, it's, you know, it's pre-existing and, you know, whatever. Because I got, I got title insurance.
Sure.
But they went back to, like I said, I got maps from 20, 1920-something.
I would only venture a guess that when the village took possession of the road, that the right-of-way just followed whatever the road was.
And all these lots here too, were all separate, like this one that we're, we're separating now, was separate.
Huh?
Oh, yeah, it was on its own before. It was smaller, actually, it was smaller, we made it bigger.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this would be a good time to just clear all this up.
Right.
Well, I don't have a problem with that at all, but I don't, I mean, what do you propose? How, you know, what do you do? Just move the property lines? But then what happens with the... I mean, I don't know how you're gonna do that other building.
And that one...
Well, that building, you wouldn't touch that one. That zoning would take care of that.
No, I'm talking about, which one are you talking about? The Swisher?
I'm talking about the, um...
Orchard.
The, um, the guy that does all the clay pottery and stuff. Is that the building you're talking about?
What's that?
The guy that does the clay pottery and everything, that's that building?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's the building we're talking about, right?
No, I thought you were talking about the chalet.
Well, that one too, but that one, we would just need an agreement between the village and you, where we would, we would have to convey that portion to you.
A property to...
Yes, correct. Am I correct in that? Okay.
Okay. So in other words, the portion that's, that that building's sitting on...
Correct.
You would just convey that property to us?
That's... Yeah, the village would just like quit claiming, do a quitclaim deed, and the village isn't warranting the title, but whatever interest the village has in that, and we could come up with a little rectangular piece, we'd give it to you.
Right.
So it'll change, so the, the right-of-way line will have a little jogging in it, just to get it out away from the building.
Right, right. Okay, so I mean...
But what we would need, though, is accurate, if you can, you know, survey.
We can do a legal description?
Yeah, description.
But that doesn't have...
Any of you down on that? Yeah.
Okay.
But that doesn't have anything to do with separating the other one?
Well, it, it does, only in this sense, and this is where I've gotta wrap my brain around it in talking to, well... By parcelling out that one parcel...
Yeah.
You're creating two parcels. As soon as you do that, all of a sudden, you're not just looking at the one parcel, you're looking at both parcels, because you've made a change. If you left it alone, it's pre-existing non-conforming. But now that you're creating a lot within this lot, now all of a sudden, it's not just one lot anymore, it's two lots. Now we have to look at both lots and cleaning both lots up in zoning, which we pretty much had all the language there for the legal anyway, so. But if you can get this portion taken care of that we're talking about, that little area that the building is in our right-of-way, prior to the planning or zoning board meeting...
So the only one that we have to do it with is the one I call the chalet.
Right, yeah, as far as moving a line.
Right.
But everything else, I mean, there's other things, other factors that the zoning will take care of. You know, how close the buildings are to the lot line, the height of the building, because we have that one-to-one ratio, height to property line, then we have to deal with the front of the Anne's Auction House building, how close it is to the front setback in our code. It talks about taking the average setback of the houses and our buildings, you know, on either side and so on, so they'll grant, Lord willing, a variance for whatever the difference is there. You follow what I'm saying?
Now, how about the zoning board?
Yeah.
Or not the zoning board, I'm sorry. How about the ceramic store?
And that one, the planning or zoning board will address that because of how close it is to the property line.
So they'll do it all in one week?
Correct. Yeah, everything will have to be addressed by the zoning board.
And then do we have to come back to the planning board again?
That's correct, yes. So we can make a legal, you know, so I don't get in trouble.
I would, so then really, tonight was just, just for practice.
Will?
Practice.
Right? I wish you would just let us know.
Yeah, well, I thought we could do this, but...
When did you know, when, when did you realize it wasn't in the paper?
Tonight. Well, no, no, I realized it wasn't in the paper, because I was homesick and on vacation. But remember, I had given you the paperwork, and I gave you the dates and everything, and how everything had to be in at a certain time?
No, you didn't give...
Yeah, when I gave you the application, you and Jim came in, and I gave you the application and the dates and everything, and I said, make sure you're in at this time, and then I was going back and forth.
Did you know that?
We talked about it after the fact, that when we got back off, particularly, if you will. And then all of a sudden, like, got some information, we tried to eat it in, planning board right-of-way versus waiting for the January meeting. Well, this is good, because we can, yeah, get this addressed with a quitclaim deed, I can work it down, nothing, get that taken care of, and then basically, the zoning board, but the zoning board transvariance is independent of the planning board. But the planning board won't act until the zoning board advertises it. Right, we gotta get it in the paper. If we had gotten it into the paper... Yeah. Okay. But the planning, the zoning board... There, if, if, in a perfect world, if we had gotten it into the paper, the planning board could have made a decision contingent on the zoning board's approval in right-of-way. And that.
That's right.
Yep. Okay, but the zoning board, when they act, can they act and grant the variances without the subdivision? And then when we come back to the planning, we don't have to come back to the zoning board after the planning board? Right, the zoning board could grant the variance contingent on the planning board granting... Right, so January 3rd would be, let's see, we'd back to the planning board, and hopefully, everything else is taken, taken into consideration.
And you think they can, the zoning board will be able to, if he goes ahead and covers out that chalet?
It's right-of-way.
They can go ahead and...
Yeah, you're, you're kind of stuck here with what's existing, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, I know, yeah.
I mean, they're not gonna ask you to move a building, and they can't move the right-of-way line, except for where it's in the building, you know? So it is what it is. And a few issues. Yeah, well, it, only because you're doing something, you know, you're, if you weren't doing anything, there wouldn't be an issue, because it'd be pre-existing non-conforming. Yeah.
All right.
Pre-existing non-conforming. I don't really like that term. Thanks, the code was created, I think, you know, when I was looking at the code... Yep. Some of the setback codes were done in 1977, they were updated in 77. Right. And then they're updated again in 94, so codes get revised... That's correct. Through time. Yeah. And back in 1920, there was probably nothing. It probably wasn't.
Nothing, or nothing.
No.
Yeah. Right.
Right, so, yeah. Or levels. Yeah, everything needs to be cleaned up. That makes sense.
We can do that, right?
Yeah.
All right. So, I don't think we can do it here. So zoning board is, what, two weeks?
Two weeks out.
So two weeks, and then based upon the information that's there, then they, they would have to have the property resurveyed, all the points delineated legally and all that business, and then...
That's correct.
Could it be done in a month? I don't know.
Yeah. Well, no, what would happen is, let's say they get all the approvals, then they have to have a map for signature... Right. Because it has to go to the assessor to sign it, and then it goes to the county, so.
So, okay, but we don't need, once we go to the zoning board...
Yes.
Okay. Now, we come back to the planning board.
Correct.
Now, the zoning board doesn't need the planning board first, okay?
No.
Okay. All right. All right.
You could do it in either or. Planning, zoning first, then planning, or planning first, then zoning, but without the variances, you can't, this board couldn't give you final approv, but any approval they would, could give you tonight would be conditioned on whatever the zoning board did anyhow. So if you don't get the variances, then you don't get the subdivision. So if you go to the, it probably makes more sense to go to the zoning board first, to make sure you're getting all the variances you need, and then this board doesn't have to worry about it. They can just look at, because they're supposed to look at the overall planning, you know, parking and access, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
Yeah. We do have the legal for the zoning. We do have the legal for the zoning, so that's good. Yeah, and that was already published? Yeah, because you did it genere, so, yeah, it just says... Yeah, because you did it years ago, so, yeah, it just says, we didn't, we didn't list them, so it comes out. So, that's fine.
Alright, okay, so, you know what you need to do from here?
See you next year? Yeah. Well, early next year.
Alright, well, we'll see you again.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, have a nice Christmas.
Alright. And before we convene, I would like to point out that Joe's gracious, he had to give us the information for training. Yes, so, webinars, and more upcoming courses, let's stay on top of our training, I was just informed that I am coming to work on the area that we can do, so I will take care of my training hours shortly, but let's stay on top of our resources. Okay, so, if there is no other business in front of the board, I will entertain a motion. I'd like to make that motion. Favor? Maybe? He acts the word.